All right, here we go. Shane, are we ready? All right, then welcome everybody to the City Council meeting for October 15th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let the record show that all council members are present.
Thank you. Patrick, closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our closed session this evening is our quarterly litigation update. It involves conference with legal counsel, which will include potential discussion of anticipated litigation due to the significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92. There are two cases we may be discussing as well as the following existing litigation matters pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. And we have the following seven cases to discuss. City of Dana Point versus the Sunshine Group, also known as the Seaside Inn. Orange County Superior Court, case number 30201700915900. Concerned residents of Dana Point versus City of Dana Point. Orange County Superior Court, case number 201901117892. Center for Natural Lands Management versus City of Dana Point. Orange County Superior Court, case number 30202101219668. Carr versus City of Dana Point. Orange County Superior Court, case number... I don't have the case number. I have the claim number 2021007664. And City of Dana Point versus Paul Frederick Myers. Orange County Superior Court, case number 3020220130150. S.T. Apartments versus City of Dana Point. Orange County Superior Court, case number 30202401397922. And Mellon versus City of Dana Point. Orange County Superior Court, case number 30202401377025. And that concludes my report.
I haven't tuned out already. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on those?
No, sir.
All right, then we are recessed to closed session until 6:00 P.M. All right, everyone. Good evening. Come on, staff. Get this place in order. Sorry. That was said in jest and the best of intentions. Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting for the City of Dana Point. And we're back from closed session. Mr. Frost, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right, everyone will please stand, face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for joining us with that. We have a number of presentations and proclamations tonight. I'm going to go just a little bit out of order. Chief Shane Mall, you want to go first and give us the quarterly OCFA update? Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate this opportunity to come out and just give the quarterly size up. This will be from a couple of months ago, but our last quarterly size up. We have a video here.
Hi, I'm Fire Captain Tang Nguyen, and this is the OCFA Quarterly Size Up. In this edition of the OCFA Quarterly Size Up, we will look at emergency response statistics, highlight a few of the incidents, training, and our involvement in the community for the quarter covering May through July 2024.
From heart attacks, hazmat, and heavy rescue, to five-car pileups, three-alarm blazes, and 50,000-acre wildfires, the OCFA is your all-hazard fire department, and this is the Quarterly Size Up.
In the past quarter, your OCFA firefighters responded to 46,307 incidents. To break it down, that's 727 fires, 12,568 all-hazard calls such as traffic collisions, remote rescues, technical rescues, hazardous materials, and various service calls, and 33,000 emergency medical service calls. Let's take a closer look at this busy quarter and revisit some of the calls and training our firefighters responded to. On Tuesday, May 7th, in the City of Buena Park, firefighters from the OCFA along with Knott's Berry Farm staff, Buena Park Police Department, outside fire agencies, and ambulance services took part in an inter-agency emergency response exercise. The drill involved a unique opportunity for firefighters to collaborate with our partners in law enforcement and ambulance services along with emergency medical services personnel from Knott's Berry Farm to support a unified and prepared emergency response as part of our commitment to the community. Sunday, May 12th, in the City of Garden Grove, firefighters from Truck 81 responded to a house where Fay, a dog, had gotten inside a wall from an outside opening and could not find her way out. After trying to coax her out, the family called for help. Truck 81 was able to locate where she was and skillfully breached the wall to get her while not causing any harm. A great example of how our crews overcome not-so-usual challenges. Shortly before 10:00 P.M. on Saturday, May 25th, in the City of San Clemente, firefighters responded to a restaurant in the 200 block of South El Camino Real for a fire. More than 50 firefighters responded as part of the two-alarm commercial structure fire. Crews faced a fire that had already extended into the void spaces, but due to an aggressive and coordinated effort, firefighters prevented it from extending into the adjacent businesses. Saturday, June 8th, dispatchers in our emergency command center received calls for a two-car traffic collision near Geronimo Road and Heidi Avenue in the City of Lake Forest. Based on caller information that there may be entrapment, the call was upgraded to a traffic collision cut-and-rescue call. On their arrival, firefighters found two vehicles involved with a sheared fire hydrant, when the cars were suspended by the force of the water from the hydrant. While our firefighter paramedics provided advanced life support care to the two drivers that were self-extricated, Truck 20 worked on isolating the water grid on each side of the hydrant until the water was shut off and the car lowered. On Friday, June 21st, FEMA California Task Force 5 deployed three human remain detection K-9 teams to aid in the recovery efforts in the aftermath of the tragic New Mexico wildfires that destroyed 1,400 structures in the village of Rudoso. On Saturday, June 22nd, after an extensive five-year period of planning, assessment, and aircraft transformation, OCFA's two Sikorsky S-70 Firehawks arrived at their home base at Fire Station 41. The Firehawks joined the two-bell 412 EP helicopters, providing the agency with four operational aircraft for the first time since 2020. With cutting-edge technology, water-dropping power, precision, and agility, the Firehawks exponentially bolster OCFA's wildland firefighting and remote rescue capabilities, protecting lives and property with unparalleled speed and safety. On Monday, July 8th, at John Wayne Airport, dignitaries, JWA staff, and firefighters from our airport fire and rescue officially placed the new state-of-the-art fire and rescue unit Crash 3 in the service with a push-in ceremony. Crash 3 is capable of pumping over 2,000 gallons of foam or water per minute and travel up to 70 miles per hour. We are proud to serve the travelers flying in and out of Orange County. On Wednesday, July 17th, in the City of Santa Ana, firefighters responded to an outdoor battery energy storage system facility in the 1,300 block of East Warner Avenue before 4:30 P.M. for a fire. Approximately 60 firefighters worked together as part of the hazardous materials response to cool the container with large volumes of water and prevent the fire from spreading to adjacent containers. Our hazardous materials response team used drones and air and water runoff monitoring equipment to ensure the community and environment remained safe. Finally, this past quarter, our work once again transcended the geographic boundaries of our service region as we answered the call for assistance from communities suffering from devastating wildfires throughout the state. We sent out a wide range of resources, including hand crews, bulldozers, helicopters, overhead personnel, and over 15 engine strike teams, which is more than 400 firefighters and overhead personnel. Our firefighters are currently still on the front lines of multiple fires, including the Park and Borrell fires. This next segment is Community Corner. This quarter, we were involved in 100 school visits and 238 community events that included fire station tours, car seat installations, and special requests from our communities. This is on top of our daily interactions while out in the field. On Saturday, July 20th, our Community Education Section and Truck 17 had the pleasure of attending the Orange County Chapter of the Boy Scouts of America's Be Prepared Day in the City of Cypress. Crews got to interact with scouts and parents to talk about...
Thank you. We'll go from there. A lot of those cover some other stuff in other cities, but I appreciate the opportunity. It was a busy quarter, as you guys all witnessed. And yes, it's not just cats and trees, but every once in a while, a dog stuck in a wall. So, but yeah, it was a busy quarter for us. Crews were really busy. As you noticed, none of those calls actually happened here in Dana Point, which is a good thing. That means we didn't have anything super major. But I like to highlight that because that's the calls that we respond to daily within the county, and the crews here are all prepared for and trained for every day. So, just some specific to Dana Point statistics from July through September. We ran a total of 1,152 incidents just within the city. 853 of those were medical aids. We had 11 fire calls and 288 miscellaneous types of calls, which could be traffic accidents, fuel spills, hazmat type of calls, things like that. So, busy quarter overall. As far as any major incidents, we did have a two-car rollover traffic collision with four patients at PCH and Copper Lantern back in August. We had a working fire on July 20th that started in the kitchen of a residence, which fortunately crews made a quick attack, got all the people out, and actually held that fire to the kitchen area of that home. So, that was really good. We did have, and you guys probably saw and heard about it, traffic collision on July 9th on PCH and Selva, where we had seven patients assessed with the fully involved vehicle there that we responded to with the sheriffs. On July 5th, a little while back, but you guys remember, we actually had a little vegetation fire down in the Dana Point Harbor. Happy to say that that fire was contained only half an acre, and we were able to make a stop before it got up to the top of the hill and burned any of the structures or the restaurant up at the top. So, that was a good stop. We did participate in a myriad of different community events and some public safety things and some station tours. So, it was a busy quarter for the crews. They love working here, love serving the city. And just, obviously, just couldn't go without saying, obviously, you guys are well aware of the airport fire that we've been on for... Well, we're no longer on it, fortunately. But we did have the airport fire over this last month, so it's been a really, really busy last month. That fire burned 23,000 acres. It was a large incident impacting multiple counties between us and Riverside County. We did end up losing, unfortunately, 120 homes out more on the Ortega end of it, El Corizo area. But fortunately, we were able to save all the homes in Robbins Ranch and Coto and that area as it came around that way. We did have two civilian injuries, fortunately both minor, and we did have the 20... We actually had 20 firefighter injuries on that fire. So, it's a pretty high number. And then, obviously, you guys are probably well aware of the hand crew firefighters that rolled their crew buggy on the 241 freeway, all with varying levels of injuries, some really severe. And then, a lot of them are rehabbing from home now, which is good. One of them, I'm happy to say, is actually back to work, which is really cool. So, if you could, you know, just continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers, that'd be great. Our hand crew is back, hard at work, and they're back and happy and doing a good job. So, it's good to see them smile again. And lastly, we did just... Our California Task Force 5, which they did mention there, did respond out to Florida for the hurricanes. They're actually on the road home right now. They're just bedded down in Flagstaff, and they should be arriving back home tomorrow. So, they were out there and did a lot of good work. So, busy quarter, busy time for us overall, but we appreciate serving the city here and appreciate this opportunity to come and speak to you.
Thanks, Chief. We appreciate the update and everything you guys do for us. So, thank you very much. See you next time. All right, next, we are going to recognize National Arts and Humanities Month, and then also recognize our volunteers of the quarter. So, I'll come down here real quick. All right. So, October is National Arts and Humanities Month, and the way we thought best to recognize it was to bring the Dana Point Art and Cultural Ambassadors up, introduce all of you all, and let us... Are you going to tell us your thoughts on National Arts and Humanities Month? Put them on the spot. Now, I'll tell you guys a little bit about what the program does for us. So, Art and Culture Ambassadors, please, all of you, come on up, please. The ones that are here. And kiddos are welcome, too. There are a few who didn't make it. I normally don't like to read off a list, but I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. So, here is a partial assembly of our Art and Culture Ambassadors. Bob Zaza, Anthony Small, Karen Chanel, Nancy Jenkins, Mary Lena Banks, Laura Smith Hatch, and Dana Yarger. Also not with us tonight, not with us tonight is, hmm, let's see, Alicia Erlinger and Natalie Rebar Kelly, Ashley Keen, Jennifer Keel. See if anyone else I missed. Nope. Those ladies couldn't be with us tonight, but we wanted to recognize National Arts and Humanities Month by recognizing you all and telling the community, again, everything that you guys do and thanking you. So, this is a diverse group of people from the art community, the culture community, nonprofit community, who all bring some level of expertise to help us bring and recognize the arts and humanities here in Dana Point from producing and putting on events of their own, like Art Fest and Shakespeare in the Park, which we'll talk about here in a minute, to promoting a Sister Cities program and bringing music to our events and the visual arts and owning the art studio in Dana Point. This group really helps add a sense of art and culture to all of our events and to our community. So, thank you all for what you do. Anything anyone wants to say about Arts and Humanities Month? Well, October is Arts and Humanities Month. We just had Art Walk. We did an Art and Culture Trolley Tour of the town. A few of those very successfully. And I know that you all do a ton for the city. We appreciate everything you do. The proclamation here basically says that I, the mayor, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Dana Point, and I call this observance to the attention of the citizens of Dana Point, call upon our community members to celebrate and promote arts and culture, and specifically encourage greater partition, participation by said community members in supporting the arts and humanities in our locality. So, we recognize you all do that for us. You help our residents do that. You add to our events. You put on great events. And as your program grows, our communities benefit from the arts and humanities grows with it. So, thank you all for what you do. This is to help you all carry out the mission that I know is so important to you. So, thank you all so very much. All right? Thank you. So, Laura Smith Hatch, we want to recognize you, along with Alicia Erlinger, who couldn't be here tonight, as two, who happen to be two of our Art and Culture Ambassadors, but also for your over and above contributions to the city during this summer's Shakespeare Festival that you helped bring to Sea Terrace Park this summer. And it was just such a great new event, so much fun, different, but great in so many ways. My wife and I attended, and were so pleasantly surprised. In particular, you and Alicia went above and beyond just making that thing happen. Anytime you run an event for the first time, anyone who's ever run an event, you realize, you learn as you go, and you just have to figure out how to make things done. Laura Smith Hatch was seven months pregnant. And I believe the baby's here tonight, right? So, she was running around making things happen, carrying a baby who was a couple of months from being born. And in particular, there was an elderly gentleman who was supposed to be a VIP for the night, which would have given him, I think, closer parking. Turned out, he parked all the way across the street in the county Salt Creek parking lot. And at the end of the night, very pregnant Laura Smith Hatch helped carry all of his stuff to his car. Do I have that right? At least help him get his... You drove, you got him to his car. Just exemplifying a going... Well, thank you. Wow, really? Yeah, so that program was... I think some of us sort of maybe missed the point that that was like a county-wide production, and there were people from all over the county who came to that. And thank you for going above and beyond. And that, just an example of you going above and beyond, helping not only there, but the kids booths at everything that goes on on Del Prado. And anytime we have an event, no matter what you have going on, and you're raising not just the little baby, but you have two other little ones. You're a mom, you're an attorney at work, and you find a way to dedicate a ton of time to our community. So, thank you so much. And thank you to Alicia, who couldn't be here tonight. But thank you so much for going above and beyond and helping add to our community by being such a great volunteer. So, thank you. Here you go. So, Laura's husband, John, and the three boys are here if they want to come up.
Yeah, and little Everett. No, my... The one big thing to say is just thank you to this city for this opportunity. Is that we couldn't do any of this without the city's support, especially the Shakespeare Festival. It was, I mean, we... Alicia came up with the idea and she... idea, and she deserves full credit for putting on the production and all of that. But it would not have happened without the city and the city staff over here and Jeff Rossler's team. So we are so grateful for them and the resources that you guys provide to allow us to put forth our fun ideas. We have the easy part of coming up with fun stuff for the community. And just encourage anybody that's interested in volunteering. This is truly, we get to volunteer and have fun together and plan and ways to make our city more culturally diverse and promote the arts and creativity within the place we live. And there's nothing better, more fun to do. And I think it aligns with giving us our unique place, sense of self of Dana Point. So we're happy to do it, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you so much. We agree, and that's why we love you guys and what you do. Thank you. And like I mentioned, Alyssa Erlinger couldn't be here tonight. Alyssa is a theater artist and a teacher at Capital Unified School District. She was instrumental in bringing that OC Shakespeare Festival here to Dana Point. Alyssa, thank you so much. Here's your plaque as well, and we'll get that to you as soon as we can. All right. Thank you to all the, the Art and Culture Ambassadors, and specifically thank you to our volunteers of the quarter. And for everybody who volunteers in this great city, it makes this place, place a really special place to live. So thank you very much. All right, on to business tonight. Madam Clerk, any ordinance titles to read?
No, sir.
All right. Consent calendar. These items, items one through, I think, 11 tonight are considered to be routine, are going to be enacted by one roll call vote unless there's anything to be pulled and discussed. Madam Clerk, any comments or requests from the public?
No, sir.
Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, number eight.
All right, item number eight. Any others? I will move the balance.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any public comment? I guess we already talked about that. So no. All those in favor of everything but item eight?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Valar, item eight.
Yeah, just, yeah, just real quick. I just want to call out our young youth here in Dana Point. Like the mayor said, volunteers make this city great. So I just want to publicly call out Sarah Powers, a junior at Dana Hills High School, Luisa Kelly, a senior at Dana Hills High School, Bobby Vixor, we recognize that name, sophomore at Dana Hills High School, Oliver Pilote, I hope I'm saying that right, sophomore at Dana Hills High School, Gabriella Cruz, a senior at Dana Hills High School, Gwen Holman, sophomore at Dana Hills High School, Jack Lauer, a sophomore at Santa Margarita Catholic High School, and our at-large member Madison Stark, a freshman at Public Academy Private Preparatory School. These young men and women have volunteered for the Youth Advisory Board. And I don't know them, except for one, but I, I'm pretty sure they're probably taking advanced placement classes in the band and on sports and all that. So, you know, for them to, to volunteer their time when they're already stretched, just shows the character of the young men and women that we have in this community. And I know I speak for the entire council here that we just thank them for that. And it's really important, what they're doing. So if they're listening or their parents are listening, their, their work definitely gets noticed by us and we appreciate it. And I'll move the recommended action.
All right. Very well said. A motion and a second. All those in favor of that item?
Yes.
Aye. All right. Madam Clerk, I think we're all good there. And that brings us to public comments. We have, I know, one public comment, is that right? Anymore, or is it just the one? I don't need the card. It's Mr. Zaza, right? All right. Bob Zaza, you have three minutes, and don't say anything mean. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You can say anything mean, but if you do, you have to direct it to me.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Councilman. Thank you for the time. Briefly, I wanted to tell you that we're very pleased to be involved with the city. It's been very supportive of Dana Point Sister Cities. We have now Citizen Ambassadors, that's what we call them. Mayor Federico and Councilman Gabbard went over to Italy for us, to Sorrento, represented us, and Rotary as well, in the Monarch Beach Rotary. We do this together with, with Monarch Beach Rotary. So been very supportive, and Michael's been very helpful with it as well. I wanted to say that Eisenhower founded Sister Cities in 1956, and the purpose was that as people exchanged cultures individually, that we'd get to know one another, and that would help promote peace among the world. So that's, that's what we're trying to do. This happened in spades with Sorrento. We've got, we went over there with an art exhibit, cultural exhibit. They came over here for the Festival of the Whales. They've gotten to be good friends as well as, as Sister Cities. On June the 10th, we received the final, from Washington DC, the final acknowledgement, formal acknowledgement, that we are official Sister Cities. So we've brought the world to, the world, Dana Point to the world and the world to Dana Point. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give this to you as a, this is for you guys and the city. I wanted to come here personally and thank you. I didn't want to take too much time, but you've been doing a lot for us, and I appreciate everything. Our whole club does.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you so much for what you and Dana Point Sister Cities does. It's an interesting, it's an interesting relationship in that it's a nonprofit, which is, our nonprofits in this town are amazing, but it, but actually also really involve City Hall, especially the way the, the Sorrento government looks at it. They don't have the luxury of having a nonprofit run a program like this. So thank you for your partnership, not only with our residents and community and with Sorrento, but your partnership here with City Hall. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, come on up. Thank you. I'll take it. Thank you. Very cool. Thank you, Bob. It'll go up on the wall in here for sure. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, no other public comments, is that right?
No, sir.
Okay. We have no public hearings tonight, so it brings us to item number 12, Police Services Update. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This quarter, Dana Point Police Services has been extremely busy, much like Orange County Fire Authority. I really want to highlight some of the community events that Dana Point Police Services partook in. You know, the, the quarter started out with a bang with Fourth of July. Not only were we very active in patrol operations, but also with the fireworks displayed down on the harbor. Everything from concerts in the park to redo market, we had resources at each event, providing for the safety of the community. And that rolled right into the Dana Point Car Show, the Honor of Valor at Dana Hills High School, where we honored Sergeant Poitras for his service in the, in the Marine Corps. And then we ended with, the end of the quarter, with the Ohana Music Festival. 15,000 people per night, sold out all three nights, assisted with state parks, FBI, Irvine PD, FAA. We actually had some drone detection. So a lot of resources for that, and a great event for everybody down there. Some additional events that we jumped into, Prado West Safety Fair, really focused on getting out in the community and letting the community know who we were as deputies. Capital Beach Neighborhood Watch Program, we had some resources out there to really speak to the community about some of the issues going on that we see around that, that neighborhood. Really great opportunities this last quarter to really get out there. Everything from beach patrol to, to our, our resources out at the park, really wanted to focus on the community. That was a, a big focus this last quarter, and it was, it was important to do. And I think that the team did a great job doing it. One of the things we jumped into was a mass exercise, max evacuation exercise, partnering with San Juan Capistrano and San Clemente Police Services. Dana Point Police Service really took the lead on this. Some new technology that we are employing to really help the department aid in evacuations. This is in partnership with OCFA. Almost immediately after this training, the airport fire happened. So it was a great timing for this, and we really try to time our trainings when we do that. But a great ability to partner with these, with these neighboring agencies, something we don't get to do a lot, but when we have the ability, we really want to take advantage of that. And, and the city of Dana Point was great in hosting that as well. Back to school, we made it a point this year to really focus on our four main campuses here. We were able to have resources there to greet the parents and children during back to school at every single school. And just a really good representative for us to be out there and really greet those kids and welcome them back to the, to the new school year. We really continue to highlight our social media engagement. Everything from the, the great work that the deputies are doing to really keeping the, the public updated on some events that are in progress. It's really important to let our community know what's going on, and we really take to social media to really engage our community in that. And we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Our volunteers in Police Services, our VIPS, they acquired some e-bikes to assist in their community outreach. You will see them out and around in the community in those bright orange shirts. We really want to keep them safe. We want people to see them. But e-bikes or something, it's a great tool for us to really connect with the community. This is a great community for e-bikes. And we're going to jump all in in Police Services and really use that resource to, to engage that community. A lot of enforcement events this quarter. On the 23rd of August, the deputies from the DUI Task Force conducted a DUI checkpoint on Golden Lantern. 443 vehicles were screened during that DUI checkpoint. We also partnered with Laguna Beach PD in a multi-agency operation targeting speeders, loud exhausts, modified emissions, and e-bike violations. That partnership was with every single Orange County agency along the coast, from Seal Beach all the way down to San Clemente. So it was a great partnership from all the different agencies doing that. Some proactive police work, really, the deputies are out and about, really looking to keep Dana Point safe. We have some great, great incidents where the deputies had some great contacts in the harbor. Really traffic enforcement is something we really like to focus on, keeping the community safe, slowing some drivers down. And then some great work, working with some of our, our businesses, addressing some issues, alcohol thefts or what, what be it. But just some great proactive work from the deputies, getting out there in the community. I want to highlight some of our FLOCK successes. During this quarter, deputies located two stolen vehicles, and each one of those incidents, we arrested the drivers. One of them did end up in a pursuit, where the driver crashed, and we were, we were able to apprehend a juvenile and adult during that after a short foot pursuit. I think one of the, the highlights we have, there was an incident in San Diego County, a homicide that had just occurred several hours earlier. And the vehicle appeared in Dana Point. The deputies were able to locate that vehicle, stop that driver, and take him into custody. He was ultimately transferred back to San Diego County, where he's going to stand trial for homicide. So it's a great collaboration with our partners in San Diego, and just great work by the deputies out and about in the city, really looking for, for the suspect. I wanted to bring up the, what social media has coined the Dana Point Dasher. I know there's been some media stories and a lot of social media, something that, you know, really is, is, we follow and we track in Police Services. You know, community partnerships led to the rest of this subject. We really follow that. We really ask our community to reach out to us. One of the, the hard things for us, for misdemeanors that are not committed in our presence, we cannot arrest for. So we need the community to really partner with us. So when we have somebody that, that walks out on a bill at a restaurant, we really get with that, that business and try to get them to kind of cooperate and understand how the process works. So we're doing a lot of outreach with those businesses to understand. But we were able to arrest this subject. We did take him to jail. We did learn that he was released the following day, though. So it's something that we will continue to address and, and partner with those businesses moving forward. It's, it's, it's a community concern, so therefore it's our concern as well. I want to jump into some statistics from July 20, from July through September. Quality of life contacts, and this is where deputies log each contact, whether it's an issue of mental health or homelessness. So we had 351 homeless contacts and 331 mental health contacts, for a total of 682 of our incidents involving a combination or, or one. Our calls for service for this quarter, we had 2,854 assigned calls and 1,466 observed calls. I kind of want to highlight, I have five calls for service related to STRs. The actual number is three, and we had two that were unknown, whether they were actually related. But that's five calls out of 2,854. And that's the same as our sober living homes, five calls for service out of 2,854. So a very low percentage for our sober living homes and short-term rentals this quarter. Let's go to some observed enforcement activity. This is the deputies out and about. They conducted 309 patrol checks, 345 traffic stops, 48 pedestrian stops, and then we had a slew of bike stops in there as well. Just some great work from the deputies getting out and about and really trying to affect traffic and keep the community safe. We'll move on to some, to citations. We had a total of 483 citations issued during this quarter. 293 of them were for parking, 102 for moving, 66 were criminal citations, and another 22 for equipment violations for traffic. So that just shows the number of enforcement activities that the deputies and the CSOs with our parking, our community service officers are taking. So some really high numbers, great work by the staff. Our arrests, we had 93 total arrests. Of that, 44 were misdemeanors, 24 were felonies, and another 25 that were warrant arrests. And that's going to conclude the presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Madam Clerk, any comments from the public?
No, sir.
Colleagues, questions or comments? All right, Mayor Portempegano.
Thank you for the update. You do such a good job on those. It's amazing that we have that much action happening here in Dana Point. In reference to the FLOCK cameras, the incident that you referenced in San Diego, do we know if that was a US national? Was that person from, the reason I'm asking you is I'm hearing a lot, like, especially if you look at some of the stuff on Nextdoor, people are stating that there's a lot of activity happening. And when I check in with the city, with the city manager, it sounds like a lot of that might be hyperbolic or other neighboring cities, and I just wanted to ask you that.
Yeah, I know there's been some talk in the past. As far as this incident is concerned, I don't have the details of whether the subjects were foreign nationals. It's not something that, that's a question for San Diego County. But in Dana Point, we're not seeing that activity here. I know there's been talk and conversation. I see it on social media as well. But the deputies are doing a good job. You know, crime is crime. To, to the deputies out in the field, they want to keep the community safe. It doesn't matter to them who's committing it. They're out there looking for the violators, and that's something that they focus on.
Thanks for the clarification. Go ahead.
I just want to point out that I noticed the improvement in your PowerPoint skills, that, that Cal education is starting to pay off for you. So good job. It looked good. It really did. I was impressed.
Thank you, sir.
All good. Thank you for the update. That's a receiving file. And thanks, as always, to, to all the deputies and CSOs who worked for you, who really are super dedicated to this town. And I hope we, they feel like we resourced them and appreciate, appreciate them appropriately. All right, great. Thanks. The next item tonight is item number 13, Financial Review Committee Appointment. And the recommended action is that the City Council select Heidi Riggs as the City Council's appointment to the Financial Review Committee. I think Mayor Portempegano, probably, and, and Mr. Frost as the members of that Financial Review Committee. I know you screen the applications. Why don't you take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost and myself had the privilege to meet with less than 10, but more than six, I believe, or at least talk to, screen applications for the Financial Review Committee. We met with three top applicants. And I just want to say, all the applicants were great. Great dispositions, definitely professional, a lot of success in their professional career. And one of the things that makes it so easy for us in trying to find somebody is that there's a, just a, a lot of good people in the city, which is a, a good problem to have. And saying that, we were of the mind that Mrs. Riggs was best qualified in the sense that she was available, ready. She's shown a lot of success in her professional career as a lawyer. And thinking that we have such a finite view from everybody coming on the committee is really, really bred in finance and accounting, having an outside perspective with some of this stuff. And, and also, given the fact that she's had a pretty good board of directors position at, at a couple of different places, including the Dana West Yacht Club. She's been privy to, you know, nonprofit and other financial services. So in saying that, I just wanted to, first off, all the other applicants, just thank them. And I hope that they find their way through the, to the city through some mechanism, because they were just lovely human beings, easy to chat with. And I hope that we get to see them again. With that, I will defer to my colleague. With that, I will defer to my colleague.
What else can I say? You've covered everything. I will say it's actually the toughest part of the job, believe it or not. In my opinion, City Council is going through applicants on these, on these subcommittees. And with that, Heidi, you're gonna be fantastic with all your background in the city, so thanks for throwing your name in the hat. With that, I will move the recommended action.
Second. All right. A motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
I just have a question. What is like the time commitment for the Financial Review Committee? What does that look like? I don't really even know.
We meet quarterly.
They meet quarterly. Is it like an hour meeting, two-hour meeting?
It's usually in an hour.
And in between that, is there research?
The staff does a good job of sending the material ahead of the meeting, usually a few to five days. And so, just to review, come prepared, ask the right questions.
Okay. Cool.
How long does it take to read the budget?
Yeah. It's an hour quarterly meeting and dozens of mind-numbing hours in between reading all that stuff. What's the CAFRA called now? The AFRA or something? They got a new name.
ACFA.
ACFA, yeah. Yeah, having served on that one, it's, all the financial and budget documents that we get, they get them all first, so it's quite a bit. Good, good. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
No, sir.
Ms. Riggs is here. Do you want to comment publicly?
Oh, yeah.
Put you on the spot. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited to jump in and get involved. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Okay. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Public comments covered, we're all good. All those in favor? Aye. And there are no opposed. Congratulations to Ms. Riggs and to all the other applicants, but thank you. It's great to have a different perspective on that, and a new perspective on that committee. That really does dig into the weeds on all our finances, so thank you very much. You also find it very, very rewarding, I think. All right. That's all our business for tonight. Council comments? Anybody? Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things that, meetings I attended through the city over the last month, I was at, went to the Washington DC ACC OC advocacy trip, went to Wash, went to the Capitol and spoke to a number of Congress members about both our dredging operation, our need for dredging operations here in the harbor. We also talked about the rail system and the need to have more resiliency there, in addition to all of the housing and other, other issues that we are addressing in the county. I was at the Mobility 21 Conference for SCAG, and also the Demographics Conference, where we figured out that California is indeed declining in population, will be for the next 40 years. So, we're trying to plan around that. I think one of the great things I got to do in this past month was be the principal for the day at the high school. I highly recommend you guys do it. Not only is it good to go out and see the young people running around, but you learn a lot and see a lot from the staff, and it's worth, it's worth your day if you can do it. So, with that, that's all I have to, and I turned in my list of meetings, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frost.
I have not turned in my list of meetings, but I certainly will do so by the end of day tomorrow. Also, tomorrow is National Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, in case you wanted to subtly bring that up at City Council tonight. So, with that said, I will pass it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Valar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I turned in my list of meetings. I have a couple of things to talk about, if you don't mind. So, at the end of the agenda here, there's a long list of things happening in our community. I'm sure the mayor might hit a couple of them, but I'm gonna highlight two in particular that really get me motivated for living here in Dana Point and all the great events that we get to enjoy as a community. First one, the Halloween Spooktacular and Trunk or Treat. This is a family event down at the Dana Point Community Center. It goes on Saturday, October 26th, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. There's gonna be a Halloween maze, action arcade games of the 80s. I challenge anybody to beat me in Centipede. If you can beat me in Centipede, I'll give you five bucks. I am a Centipede champion. Live bands, if you're old enough to remember Centipede, raise your hand. Yeah, Jamie Toe is not raising her hand, I can tell. All right. So, there's gonna be bands, a costume contest, a bounce house, obstacle course, dunk tank. Police Services are gonna be out there, hosting Trunk or Treat. You get to meet some special units there, including the Bloodhounds, Canines, Mounted Patrol, Bomb Squad. The Dana Point Youth Baseball Dugout is gonna be open for food and beverages, so go support them, and that certainly benefits some of the folks up here on this council directly. I'm a coach there, and Matt's got boys that play in the league, so that's gonna be a great event. Second event that I want to point out is Dia de los Muertos. That day, that event is really important to me personally. Jeff Rossler and his team have been just absolutely fantastic planning for that event. It's going Saturday, November the 2nd, from 3:30 to 8:00. We're gonna have music, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have art, we're gonna have faint paste, paint, face painting, sorry. Real special guests there. We're gonna have the Junior Mariachi from our own Marco Forster Middle School, is gonna be performing a couple songs. So, come on out there and support them. We'll have ofrendas, if you don't know what that is, please come out, and you'll get a taste of, of the culture for Dia de los Muertos, which is great. There's gonna be bands. Mariachi Reyna is gonna be there, they're a very well-known, award-winning mariachi, the first all-female mariachi group in the United States, and they're really, really good. So please, come on out, enjoy the festivities. It's a free family event, again, starts at 3:30 on Saturday, November 2nd. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. Mayor Portempegano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn in my list of meetings, I have it queued up, ready to send, but I just want to say something that I don't think's ever been uttered in Dana Point, which is that the Dolphins are 7-0 right now. And that's pretty amazing. I think they have one game left. I do believe it's away. But nonetheless, pretty excited to see Dana Hills handling business and kick some butt Dolphins. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I will turn in my list of meetings. I'm clearly not as academically advanced as Councilmember Gabbard. I got principal of the day at RH Dana Elementary School. But nonetheless, I learned a lot and had a good time doing it. And thanks likewise, like you said, thanks to Capo Unified School District for putting that on, and what an amazing program they have up there at RH Dana, and I'm sure would have had the same experience at Dana Hills when I graduate. Some upcoming events, so many between now and the next time we meet, I'm gonna highlight a few. October 19th is a bulky item pickup day at South Shores Church. So if you've got stuff that's in your garage, or your yard, or your driveway, and you want to get rid of it, they'll have dumpsters there all day. Bring it by and drop it off. Electronic items, too? Or no? Just bulky items? Just bulky items. Don't bring your electronics? Or maybe, we're not sure.
We did that last time. I need to verify, though, for this one, and we'll make sure that's published.
Definitely bring your big stuff, maybe not your big TVs. We'll figure, we'll get that out on social media. Let's see. Councilmember Valar already talked about the Halloween stuff in Dia de los Muertos. On November 11th, the VFW, in conjunction with the city, put on a great Veterans Day service at Strands Vista Park. If you've never been to that, it's a great way to honor Veterans Day. November 10th is the Marine Corps' birthday, everyone should celebrate that one. November 13th, holiday light activation, all our lights are going on on the 13th, is that right? I'm getting a funny look from, from the Public Works Director every time I bring up something.
I was working on the other one you just raised, sir. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And don't be concerned if some tree lights go on between now and then, because you have to test them, right? Like, you gotta put them on, make sure everything works.
I will assure you, they are all, have been out there for weeks already, and they're continuing at night, so be nice to them as you drive by them.
Yeah. You will see some lights going on, on the trees, and even be lit as they test them out, but don't, don't get too concerned, we're not starting Christmas in October. November 13th, the holiday lights will go on. And then November 16th, Seroptimist, which is a great nonprofit here in the South County region, is, has their annual craft fair at the community center. It's a great little, easy-to-get-to local event. Last but not least, November 5th is Election Day. Please get out and vote. Mr. City Attorney, got anything?
I have nothing this evening.
Right. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just a quick update on the Strands Shuttle Program that is taking the place of our funicular. Just letting you know that I signed off under my authority on a contract to do a feasibility study to make that program permanent, and we will be back to council if it moves forward. And the property owners down there are paying for the study. So just letting you know, we're still working, we're working on it, but it will be a process.
Great. Thank you. And I know you guys have put a lot of work into trying to figure that one out, so thank you very much. If there's nothing else?
Mr. Mayor, I do have an update for you.
Okay, thank you.
No hazardous waste, but e-waste is accepted.
Okay, so electronics are okay, but no hazardous waste?
And there's shredding, which is a big deal. That's what everybody comes for.
Oh, yeah. It's actually a really big deal.
Yes.
This thing? Yeah. They're updating, they're updating the contract with CRNR as we speak. That's actually a really big deal, so.
I like how Sheena, I like how Sheena did it over there.
So, October 19th is a bulky item, electronics item, and shredding day at South Shores Church. That's actually, thank you for clarifying that, because that's a really cool amenity and service to our community. I have boxes of stuff in my office that I'll bring by and give to you, Matt. Thanks. All right. With that, any other last updates? No? Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for your participation and attendance, and for your viewership. The next regular meeting of the Dana Point City Council will be November 19th, 2024, at 5:00 PM, here in the council chambers at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210, Dana Point, California. Shop local. Have a good night.